I am calling this meeting to order. This is the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, held on Tuesday, July 15th, commencing at 4:30 PM. Council members in attendance are Council President Kritzer, Council Member Stewart, Council Vice President Forsyth, Council Member Fields, Council Member Noiva Camina, and myself, Council Member Salaah Houdin as the presiding officer, and Council Member Anderson has joined us as well. There are five items on the agenda as action items, and then one additional item that is a read-only. We will go to the first item, which is with Police Chief Daryl Lowe. It's the Lake Washington School District, 2526 School Community Resource Officer Contract Agreement.
Good afternoon, and thank you. So, in the packet is our standard contract with the Lake Washington School District for the Community Resource Officer Program, formerly the School Resource Officer Program. Nothing has substantially changed with it. I will note that this is the first time that we've actually gotten it through, or gotten it from the school district prior to the beginning of the school year. So, we're making great progress as we move forward. The program remains, I'll say, successful and very well-received. So with that, it's the typical move it to consent for approval, and we'll continue to have Community Resource Officer in our Redmond schools.
Thank you. Questions from council? Council President Kritzer?
Thank you, Chief. I just wanted to note that when we met with the Lake Washington School Board, there had been some discussion about convening a regular meeting that would include representatives from the City Council, as well as the mayor, to meet regularly. And I haven't gotten follow-up on that, but I did, I feel like, I did hear maybe that there was something being organized. So if anyone knows anything, feel free to jump in. But this reminds me to reach out to their school board president and get the follow-up on that, since I think that was a really good conversation we had with them at that meeting. And I would encourage anyone to check that out as well, about kind of how we collaborate with them on this going forward.
Council Member Noiva Camina?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Chief, thanks for bringing this forward. I'm carrying on with what Council President had said, and I've got just a couple of questions. So I'll do them super fast, because I know that you've got three minutes on today's agenda. Was in Section 10 on evaluation, and wondering if the council is able to see the input that the school district gives for transparency sake. This way, we can, in the spirit of that collaboration. I thought that it was interesting in Section 4, and being a veteran, I usually key into these things. In Section 4, it talks about anti-discrimination, and it identifies honorably discharged veterans. And typically, I'll see veteran status or military status, but not honorably discharged veteran. Do you know offhand why that change was put in?
I do not. So the contract is actually prepared by the school district and given to us, and then reviewed by our legal. But the, I'll say, the word choices and the development of the actual contract is theirs, because this is a contracted service that we provide to them, so they draft the expectations and scope of work, et cetera.
Great, thank you. And I would be absolutely remiss, because I know that this is definitely on the hardened minds of many of our communities around the immigration. And, Chief, no response absolutely required on this, but I just wanted to read into the record that Section 5 on immigration does say, and I'll do it as quickly as possible, "For all students and families to feel comfortable and secure in the school environment, students, parents, and family members shall not be questioned by a CRO about their immigration status. CROs will not assist Immigration and Customs Enforcement Officers," otherwise known as ICE, "in any way in conjunction with their assignment as a CRO or in any work related to students and their education. Information obtained by a CRO from the district databases or student records will not be released to ICE personnel or to other agencies investigating anything related to the immigration status of the student and/or their family members. If outside local or federal officers request information that may be related to an immigration investigation, they shall be referred to the Lake Washington School District's legal counsel." Thank you, Chief.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Just thanks for the information, and I really am grateful for the dashboard and being able to go on that dashboard, and hoping to see that link for the dashboard in the memo in coming years, because it's really critical to be able to see what the types of calls are, who's being interacted with. And it's definitely very interesting to see the wide variety of calls. Could you give me a little more insight on community-oriented policing and suspicious circumstance, and what those might entail?
I'll start with the latter. So suspicious circumstance can just be any type of call where they want an officer to check on something, but it does not, it's not specific that like a person is looking into a vehicle. It could be a suspicious package, it could be a suspicious person walking around the campus, but they don't articulate, I'll say, something to like the second or third degree of a specific action. And then, community-oriented, could be anything from a festival or program or something along those lines, more activity-type based, much like Derby Days or something that we do through our community engagement unit.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I would encourage community to go ahead and check out the policing dashboard. You can just Google Redmond Police Dashboard, Redmond, Washington Police Dashboard, and you can find the statistics on our SRO, or sorry, Community Resource Officer CRO program.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this will be on consent at the next business meeting, and we will hopefully get it through then. The next item on the agenda is with, also with police, the contract with leasing two for the financing of SCBA and air cylinder equipment. Oh, sorry, that's with FIRE. Yeah, yeah. Police, yeah, you want that? Yeah. Chief Shepard, Deputy Chief Whitney, and Deputy Chief Kurokony.
Hello, council. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. FIRE is bringing forward to you a contract with leasing two to help finance the purchase of new SCBA and air cylinder equipment. The SCBAs are our self-contained breathing apparatus equipment that we have. We are going to be purchasing brand-new SCBA units and air cylinders to replace our outdated equipment and our end-of-life safety gear. To support the investment, the FIRE department recommends entering into a capital equipment lease, like we've done already and brought to you before with our apparatus. The agreement helps us preserve the department cash flow, as well as the city cash flow, by spreading out the payments over multiple years, so the lease agreement is for a 10-year program with you. We are requesting that this be approved and added to the consent agenda at the business meeting on August 4th.
Thank you. Any questions for Deputy Chief Kurokony and not for Chief Lowe? Council Member Noiva Camina?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Chief. And also, thank you for the robust request rationale that was put up. The backside of it gives us a much better understanding. My question on it was, I noticed that the lease payment schedule is for 10 years, and the current equipment that we have, the expected life cycle of it is 10 years. We're at 12 currently, and just making sure that this next set of equipment is also, we're looking at a 10-year as well.
Yeah, we would be. And with the lease agreements, we have the option of either keeping the equipment, so if we determine that it's in suitable condition, and we're talking about like harnesses and face masks and stuff like that, if they can actually be used for an additional two years, we would. But if they're at 10 years, then we would be done, and we could either buy everything new or enter into another lease agreement. Leasing allows us to actually just give back the equipment to the leasing company, or actually keep it if we have another use for it. Does that help?
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. So, as noted in the memo, this isn't in the budget, currently in the biennial budget. So can you speak to what are the funding sources? It notes general fund, but is it from projected savings, or?
I believe, and Director Cochrane is here on this one, but I believe that there are some remainder funds in the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund that are able to actually cover this. Yes, she's nodding in affirmative.
And is this, is part of the budgeting change, not only using that kind of to cover the initial costs, but also because this is an ongoing commitment through the 10-year agreement?
Ask that question. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Just in terms of, is there any sort of budget that we had planned for this?
Yeah, well, we have, our city's fiscal policies do say that this shall always be replaced when the request comes up. When it came up last year, as we were doing our budgeting process, we were actually also trying to look for a grant to be able to partner with another agency to see if we could actually receive it through a grant. So it didn't get into the request at that time, or wasn't approved at that time, with the idea that maybe a grant, because we felt like we were pretty strong on the grant process. Unfortunately, we didn't receive the grant, and we still needed to do the replacement. So we went back to finance and then actually requested that we go ahead and get it entered into this budget and make an adjustment to this budget.
Okay, great. So there's no kind of trade-off for other types of equipment that we normally would have spent that money on for this?
No, no.
We already had some money.
Yep, correct. Yeah. And that's what the leasing helps. So instead of going into our Capital Equipment Replacement Fund for 1.5 million, we're going in for just a couple hundred thousand.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from council? Great, seeing no questions or concerns, this will be on the agenda for consent on August 4th.
All right, thank you very much.
Next up, we have FIRE again, approval of interlocal agreement for hazardous materials response. I believe we have Battalion Chief Caleb Freeman.
I apologize, I've got a couple of issues I'm trying to manage at the moment, but yeah, here to talk to you about the interlocal agreement for hazardous materials response. And this is a renewal of an existing agreement. It was originally signed back in 2004, so it's a little out of date. The new agreement updates a lot of the newer language around indemnification and changes a little bit of the governance structure, and also gives some flexibility to being able to modify the agreement in the future, as well as changes the formulation of the governance board. So happy to answer any questions on that.
Questions from council? Great, no questions? Oh, yeah, Council Member Stewart. Going to make it that easy?
Yeah, thank you so much. Really appreciate you being here. Could you share a little bit more about why, if the original agreement is from 2004, is that what I heard correctly? So why we're 20 years out of date on this?
The, that's a good question. It has not caused any problems to this point, but as we've gone further and further from the original date, we do finally get to a point where we recognize as, you know, public agencies that it is prudent to go ahead and have an updated agreement. There hasn't been any lack of response or training or funding on it, that that's not the issue. Just wanted to make sure that it does reflect the existing language of interlocal agreements, ones that were written 21 years ago. Do use some different language and didn't really have the same indemnification discussion in them. And then, as I had said, there was not a mechanism to add amendments or adjustments to the existing agreement, so that really made it difficult to work within if there was a needed change.
Council Member Fields?
So where is it on your calendar to update it the next time?
It doesn't say anything in the agreement as far as any kind of regular update schedule. We hope to look at our ILAs every five years or so to verify.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns with seeing this on the August 4th agenda? Great, we will see it on consent then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the approval of the agreement to administer homeless outreach software in partnership with the City of Kirkland and City of Bellevue. We have Human Services Manager Brooke Buckingham and Deputy Director Seraphy Allen from Planning and Community Development.
Thank you, and good afternoon. This will be a reminder to you of this topic, and I'll hand it over to Brooke Buckingham, our Human Services Planning Manager. I did just want to say that you have seen this before, and I'll go from there.
Yeah, so apologies that we're coming back again with this agreement. This was approved by council on your consent agenda on June 3rd, and around the same time, Bellevue was taking it to their city council and requested an amendment to the agreement. So that is included in your Packet Attachment B. We have a red line version. And there'll be a new provision titled "Data." Data may only be used for permissible uses to fulfill the purpose of this agreement. Each participating city is responsible for maintaining the data. It enters into the system. Data that is submitted to the system may be retained in the system if a participating city terminates its participation. So we're requesting that this be approved at the upcoming consent agenda, and I can confirm there'll be no further revisions. Bellevue has moved forward with this, and we're awaiting your approval.
Thank you. Questions? Council Member Stewart?
Thank you so much, Brooke. We actually don't have a red line version, so I'm just clarifying and confirming that it's .5, that whole section on data, that is the section that you just read, is Section 5. Is that correct? Thank you.
Council Member Noiva Camina?
Thank you. That was my question. Well, I appreciate a red line version to compare and contrast of transparency as well, that we didn't have it.
Yeah, and I'll make note of that, because I think when you convert Word document to PDFs, sometimes the red line, so I was trying to make sure if that happened, but we'll follow up in the future for if that doesn't happen again.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. I guess, yeah, now, since we're adding this section, I remember when we approved this agreement, we did have a lengthy discussion at committee basically around data. So I guess my only question would be for you all as staff, if you think that this language covers the spirit of what we talked about, in particular, making sure that the data aligns to our own policies, especially around privacy and other types of kind of data governance for these vulnerable populations that is tracking?
Definitely.
Yeah, Brooke and I discussed that, and we're like, this is almost exactly what our council is talking about as well. And so we felt that you would be happy with that edit.
Great, so you don't have any additional tweaks or anything?
We don't.
I'm okay with it, thanks.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thanks. The only question that I have is around who's responsible for the data privacy on the backend? So we're responsible for the input for our city, but as this is a collective agreement, is that within the Apricot system, that they're responsible for the data privacy end?
You mean for the ability of someone to be able to get into Apricot? Yes, they would be responsible for that. And our technology and information services has done an extensive background check with them and work on that.
Great, thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, we will see this on the August 4th consent agenda. Finally, we have the proposed King County Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2026 Funding Allocation Plan. We have Deputy Director, are you heading out? Oh, Alaric on the line, and then Deputy Director Allen, and Senior Planner Alaric in.
Alaric, feel free to take it from here.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I am, sorry. Good afternoon. As you may recall, the City of Redmond participates in an interlocal agreement with King County for administration of federal community development block grant entitlement funds. And eligible uses for these funds are governed by HUD, with additional requirements covered under the ILA. Our recommendations for 2026 are included in Attachment B. And what we're proposing is that the city fund Porchlight to operate the year-round East Side Homeless Shelter for Men for approximately, at approximately $44,000. Continue to support affordable housing through our partnership with Arch, and that amount would be about $168,000. And allocate the remaining amount to cover staff costs associated with administering the grant, also approximately $44,000, or 10% of our entitlement. The numbers, as you may remember, are just estimates, because we won't know the actual amount until next year, typically by early summer, after the budget is passed by Congress. Currently, CDBG funding is not included in the proposed federal budget for 2026. But we'll see what happens. And we're asking that this recommendation be placed on the consent agenda. I apologize for the discrepancy in the agenda. It says for August 4th. I didn't know when I was writing the memo that you were meeting one time in August, so that's why I had put September 16th. But if you're amenable, August 4th consent would be great.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Council Member Noiva Camina, and then Council Member Stewart.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Alaric, welcome. So on that same section on the agenda for time constraints, where it also says October 10th, 2026, should that be 2025?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure of that, and then also?
And this, the September 16th, 2026?
Yep.
I mean, 2025, right.
Another possible Scrivener error, and I don't know if this would have any unintended consequences, but I do know that Congregations for the Homeless is now Lighthouse, and in Attachment A, it lists congregations for the homeless, homeless services. So I just wanted to make sure that before it moves forward, that, because again, I didn't want there to be any unintended consequences with the recent name change.
I really apologize, missed that, don't know how that got in. Congregations for the Homeless is now Porchlight, and it should read Porchlight. So we will correct that, correct the dates to 2025, and correct the name of the sub-recipient before it goes to council again.
And with the contingency plan that was mentioned in here, of course, not knowing how things are going to go with the federal administration and what funds will be, when would we expect to see that contingency plan? With the understanding, of course, that we're not going to know until probably mid-year?
Yeah, so the contingency plan, every year, basically what it means is that we don't know exactly how much we're going to get. So if we get more than what we were budgeting, we'll increase everything proportionately. And if we get less, we would decrease everything proportionately. So unfortunately, if it really is zeroed out in the 2026 federal budget, all those numbers will go to zero, and we wouldn't have any community development block grant funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Stewart?
Thank you. My questions have been addressed by the previous conversation. I just want to offer my support for moving forward. I'm fine with these cleanups to move forward on August 4th, and just to be as prepared as we can to bring these dollars into our city when the federal government decides to give them to us. Thanks.
Council Member Fields?
Yeah, thank you. So, Alaric, just making the assumption that these funds do go to zero, and I get that the contingency plan that you described would be, they would go to zero. Is there also a further plan that we would potentially find other funding for these agencies within the city? Is that something that we are looking at, or we would consider?
Alaric, I can take that one if you'd like.
Great, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think the short answer is, I think we would wait until we know that there's going to be a problem, and then we would check in with what would be available. But these are definitely important programs, and so we would go through the budgeting process to try and get it adjusted.
And I'll just also add that we've already committed to two years of funding for Porchlight. So if we don't get the community development block grant, we would use general funds for that. It's not, it's about $40,000, $44,000. So we have some contingency funds to fund that piece of it. The Arch, we would need to look for other revenue streams.
So if I can just follow up? So thinking in terms of that direction, and thinking in terms of other health and human services budgeting, or potential programs that we rely on the federal government, if in fact this becomes a manifestation or a trend, would we, are we looking at potentially setting up any kind of reserves? I get that you would go to the general fund. I understand what Deputy Director said, that we would wait to see what happens before we would actually look to make decisions. But is there any thoughts about protecting funds for these programs in our current budget?
I think it's a wait-and-see right now. There's a lot of different things that could be cut or not cut, and we don't know. And so I think we'd be waiting, and it sounds like Director Helen would like to add to it, but I think we would wait to know what actually is going to come through in the federal budget, and then make our direction from there.
Seraphy's exactly right, and the Finance Department and all of us have been cognizant of the fact that there are likely going to be some cuts that we may need to respond to. We would never be able to fill all the gaps that were created, but what we have done is been really conscientious about the money that we have in reserve for things like affordable housing, for the affordable housing, $10 million, and are waiting and seeing before committing any of those funds, so that if additional funding is deemed necessary, that there are some access to reserve that we would be able to allocate based on a priority basis. We would certainly be coming back for a conversation with the council.
So it sounds like we're definitely taking steps, and it sounds like what you just described in my mind is a soft reserve.
Correct.
So I'm good with that. And I'm glad that we're mindful about this, because I think, I'm not going to predict the future, but there is that possibility, so thank you.
Correct. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Helen. Any other questions? Council Member Stewart?
Thanks so much. Just to add to the conversation, two things come to mind. If I remember correctly, the council is set to meet with our federal lobbyists, so maybe having a chance to ask them about their work thus far on this grant program could be a helpful thing the council might want to check in on. And also, just for the listening public, and a reminder to ourselves, we have been getting these quarterly financial reports from Director Cochrane and Deputy Director Nara, and these are the questions that we have had each quarter with them. What kind of stress testing is going on? Director Helen, it's helpful to hear you say, because we've been asking what's not being spent in order to make the best informed decision. So that $10 million, or that chunk that's left on that $10 million, that we are in fact holding it, that is helpful to know. That's good to know, and I think the council's been really clear on, we want to be involved and to be aware, so that we can help be part of the conversation. So much appreciated, thanks.
We will be coming back in September, August, and talking a little bit more about that $10 million. There is a need that we're committing some of the money to, and it's not holding all of the reserve hostage, but it is, like I said, being really mindful about where we prioritize spending right now, while there's so much uncertainty.
And I wanted to add too, that we actually provided some talking points to Mayor Bernie for the National League of Cities Conference, and to our lobbyists about CBDG, and because there's actually also conversations about making it more flexible. So that's where we don't really know where it might end. It might be completely cut. They might end up deciding to make it more flexible. And so we're provided talking points on that, as well as related to the housing voucher situation as well.
Council President Kritzer?
Yeah, I'll just note that at the Pudgedstown Regional Council Executive Board meeting, actually, I think they have, either, they have the same lobbyist company, at least federally, as we do, and they, there was some discussion just about this topic, and about how I think it's a high priority overall in terms of city engagement. So they were expecting it would be an issue that we might see change on from the initial proposal to later. One thing I just wanted to clarify, since I have the mic, in terms of this, on the Porchlight funding, so from what I'm understanding, from what you're saying, is that the biennial allocation that we did to Porchlight, that we were envisioning this was going to be kind of the funding source for that when we made that allocation? Is that right?
So we have contracted with Porchlight for something like $133,000 per year for '25 and '26, of which a small portion is CDBG funds, so about $40,000. And if we, because we've already committed to that And if we, because we've already committed to that larger amount, we will go ahead and dip into reserve general funds to make that hole for Porchlight.
Got it. But yeah, but this is kind of one of the revenue sources we were projecting when we budgeted that.
Correct.
So, and that makes sense, because I think my question was going to be, why do we see Porchlight come back as the allocated one? But that's because we just budgeted to use this source for them.
Exactly.
Correct.
Yep, for a portion of it.
Great. Anything else? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I just wanted to circle back on the, putting this on the August agenda. In favor of that personally, with those minor Scrivener changes.
Great. Yeah, I was going to ask if there's no other objection, are we good to have this on August 4th? Perfect. See, we will see this item on consent on August 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all of our action items for today. We have one informational-only item for council, the Redmond Police Department Police Activity Report for Q2 of 2025. If there are any questions, and for the listening public, this presentation provides a summary of police activity for the first half of '25 compared to the first half of the previous two years. There's a lot of information in there. We, as council, can ask police offline. Yeah, Council Vice President Forsyth?
I just wanted to call out that the numbers are going down, and I think that's really important for us to call out, that the numbers of calls for service and residential burglaries, auto thefts, everything, pretty much everything looks like it's trending downward. So I think that's something that we really need to highlight in a public meeting.
Great. Thank you for that highlight. Councilmember Fields?
I was going to mention that, but I also want to mention that arrests are going up, and it feels like a contradiction. I'm not sure if the rest going up means that's a driver for the crime to come down, or there's a lag, or, not sure. But it's an interesting distinction.
Thank you for calling that out as well. Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
And one more point on the read-only item. My colleagues brought up the points I had noticed as well. And in addition to that, while of course, the overall crime was down, we also saw not only an uptick in arrests, we also saw specifically an increase, and fairly large one percentage-wise, in violent crime as well. So I'm sure that three of us will be emailing some questions to get some clarity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I know Chief Lowe's not here, Deputy Chief Coats. Get prepared to answer lots of questions offline, unless you want to address any of them right now. Oh, yeah, yeah, perfect. Yeah, thank you.
And yeah, Brian Coats, Deputy Chief of Police. I did hear the first comment about overall call for service and crime, specifically property crime being on the downturn. I will point out that it is region-wide. There was an article in the Seattle Times over the weekend about this very topic, where shootings are down like 29%. Property crime, specifically auto theft, is down 40%. We're seeing similar numbers here locally. I guess the question that's always asked is, you know, what's the why behind that? And it's oftentimes hard to pinpoint. But specific to auto thefts being down, there was quite an emphasis from the law enforcement side of the watch of putting offenders behind bars. And specifically, tracking down and arresting what is familiarly known as the Kia boys, who were responsible for a lot of thefts of Kias and Hyundai products. So logic would say that when they are not free to steal and they're behind bars, that the auto theft would go down. And that's probably why we're seeing not only a reduction in auto theft, but a reduction in cannabis store overnight burglaries are down. And those are usually, if you recall, Hyundai and Kia products being used as battering rams. So again, I guess the system works when people are behind bars that have been committing those crimes. That's the most plausible explanation specific to property crime and auto theft. Councilmember, your comment on violent crime being up is accurate, especially when you look at aggravated assaults. Those are, in talking to our crime analyst, specific to a number of factors, or a couple of different factors. One is unfortunately domestic violence offenses. And the way NiBRA's defines an aggravated assault is any kind of a weapon is used to commit harm or the threat of harm. And that could be a chair, it could be a stapler, it could be a firearm or a knife. So it's a pretty wide category, and it really comes down to how the individual officer puts the code into that call. Also, the jewelry snatch crimes have become a little bit more aggressive over time, where people are going hands-on and physically trying to pull people into the car, at least their limbs, so that they can get the jewelry off of them. So that could be codified as a theft, a robbery, or aggravated robbery. So those combined would show that increase in violent crime. I would say, fortunately for the City of Redmond, you know, the violent crime regarding firearm offenses and, you know, serious assaults and homicide remain almost zero. I apologize if there was a third comment.
Arrests increase.
Arrests being up, and yeah, the, and is that, you know, does that equate to a lower property crime? Hard to say on that. A lot of our arrests are for shoplifts, theft, and third degree. We go to those calls multiple times a day. If I could find an answer to anything in my career before I retire, it would be, how do we stop shoplifts? Because they really are a drain on our resources. It hurts the business community, because they lose income, obviously. And there's very little in the way of prosecution. And my last comment, I think, explains why shoplifts still occur. There isn't a lot of prosecution for low-level property-type crimes. Thus, there's very little in the way of a deterrent. So they're going to keep occurring. I think when you see arrests are up, that means that we are doing our job, and we are holding people accountable. And if that equates to lower crime in the city, then we're, you know, we're doing the job. And the higher arrests should equal lower people committing crimes.
Any further questions on this read-only item? Thank you, Deputy Chief. Great, really appreciate it. And thank you. There are no other agenda items. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned.